Just gonna give everybody a quick reminder. We had a few people ask that the August is not supposed to talk. If you will, make sure to keep everything quiet. A lot of people on Facebook and all again here. And so may I ask everybody just to control yourself and let us make sure we're conducting this before you come in tonight. If everybody would bow your head, let's say a word prayer. Dear God, thank you for this wonderful day. Your Lord, thank you for all your blessings that you've done for us and given us. We ask that you watch over and direct us and help us to make wise decisions for the city of the Lord, that we will be a shaman testimony for you in everything that we say and do. And thank you for all your blessings. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen. May I just stand for a flag of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation, by God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Do I have approval for a minute for the regular meeting of July 12, 2022?
I make the motion that we approve the minutes from our regular meeting on July 12, 2022.
Ms. Mills?
Yes.
Ms. Millie?
I'll go over here. I don't want to have to back up.
Okay. Max?
Yes.
Ms. Seagars? Very good. Ms. Security, thank you. Do we have approval of meeting agenda for tonight?
Mr. Mayor, can I add just one comment?
Yes.
Item F, Ms. Stacy Richards not going to be able to be here tonight. She had a conflict come up at the last moment, so we're gonna move her some next month. So can you just move that along?
We'll leave it as is. We'll just table it when we get there. We'll talk. All right. All right. Do we have approval of meeting for tonight?
I'm going to approve the meeting agenda for tonight.
Ms. Mills? Ms. Backus? Ms. Reed? Ms. Seagars? Ms. Security, thank you. All right. A report of community events, community events. The Downtown Urbanization Association, Ms. Bailey?
I have with me also tonight Ms. Teresa Lott, who is a member of our board, just so you can get to meet some of the other folks that are participating in the DERA. Thank you again for having this opportunity. The DERA continues our Bringing Downtown line free summer concert series Saturdays on the Square presented by City Darlington. Darlington Cruisers plans to continue their monthly car shows during the concerts, and we'll have a solid group of food trucks and other vendors scheduled to attend, and more vendors being added every day it seems like. Thanks to Pepsi, Fiber Industries, Belt Funeral Home, and Los and Senior Care, and thank you to the community for your support of our efforts. The last event we had in July was a jazz concert. We had a great crowd. We just got cut off a little bit because of the rain, but it seems like everybody's enjoying the events. Got lots of food vendors, lots of, lots of good times. The slate of bands will continue with the Rick Strickland Band on August 13th. The group features several artists who are from Darlington and has, the group has recently been honored by the Carolina Beach Music Academy with 13 nominations for 2022, including best male and female vocalist, songwriter, instrumentalist, song, group, and entertainer. So come see this talented group perform live downtown Saturday, August 13th, 7:00 to 10:00 p.m. Come early and bring a chair as the Rick Strickland Band brings a crowd from North Carolina and Myrtle Beach. The DERA continues our monthly member breakfasts at 8:00 a.m. on the last Thursday of the month. That will be Thursday, August 25th at Taki's Diner. The meals are at no charge for members and a small $5 fee towards the meal for all others. This allows our businesses to make connections and strengthen our local economy that way. We are also having a Halloween decorating contest this year for businesses with a top prize of $1,000. The businesses don't have to be on the square or members of the DERA to participate, but we'd love to have them join us. Businesses need to register with me by October 15th to compete. They can go online to buildupdarlington.org/scare for Scare on the Square and download the form, or they can just give me a call and I can get it to them. The public is gonna be selecting the winners in an online survey during the last week of October in preparation for the Scare on the Square, which is set for the Friday before Halloween, which is October 28th, from 4:30 to 6:00. You can get this type of news directly to your phone or email at buildupdarlington.org/signup. We promote Darlington and its businesses on social media and through the News Alert system each week, and the alerts reach more than 2,700 people.
Can you tell the public, just on Facebook and all, a lot of people don't know about what the DERA does, about the grants for the facade and, you know?
So, the DERA since 2016 has had an improvement incentive grant available each year. Each year the board pledges a certain amount to distribute to local businesses and property owners to fix up the outside facade, whether that's fixing windows, painting the building, or getting a new sign. We actually just approved three more grants today. I'm not gonna announce them since I haven't told those people yet, but so far our, our projects that the grants have been connected to have improved Darlington and have been involved in $200,000 worth of improvements in town. It's a 50-50 grant, so it's a match up to $1,000. It's not a lot, but sometimes a little, every little bit helps. So that's one of the projects that we're making.
Great.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The change of color and she's come here. All right, now, since you're wishing to appear before council, Jim Vernon?
Thank you, Jim Vernon. I am here at the Darlington Country Club, the general manager here at Darlington Country Club. I think, I understand, I kinda got caught in between. I was gonna make a request for funds from the hospitality tax. In the past, you've helped with the Southern 500 tournament that we've held over the last, I believe this will be the 59th year in a row, we have approximately 140 golfers coming from all over the southeast Georgia, Tennessee, North Carolina, even as far away as Florida have come in. You've been fine enough to help us in the past, and I understand that there's gonna be voted on a new grants committee tonight. Our tournament will be held on August 26th through 28th, so I wanted to go ahead and ask or request funds of $5,000 for support of the Southern 500. That's really all I have any questions of that.
The dates against what time?
August 26th, 27th, and 28th. Any other questions on that?
Thank you. Thank you. You coming for that? You good? Okay, thank you. Thank you so much for having today with that. All right, new business, the Darlington Pilot Club Sweet Potato Festival. Krista Abbott, club president?
Good evening. How are y'all? Have these very good.
City Councilwoman, past president of the pilot club. Honorable Mayor Kirk Floyd, members of the RNC City Councils, political great excitement that we prepare for the 39th annual South Carolina Sweet Potato Festival in downtown Darlington. We are proud that our festival is the longest running festival in South Carolina, and we appreciate your continued support of the South Carolina Sweet Potato Festival throughout the years. The resources and cooperation of Darlington's street and sanitation department, police department, and the Darlington Recreation Department are truly appreciated, along with the donations provided by the city of Darlington. The Pilot Club of Darlington is a 501(c)(3) organization providing services and assistance for others in our local community. The funds raised from the South Carolina Sweet Potato Festival are used to benefit those in our community. Pilots support the leadership development of youth through the Darlington Anchor Club, caring for families in times of need through our Pick Me Up program, and brain safety and fitness throughout our internationally award-winning program of brain miners. Teaching children as well as adults how to protect their brain for life and supplying children with proper helmets as needed. The theme of this year's festival is helmets, a no-brainer. We plan to partner with the Darlington City Police Department so that officers can give out certificates or retrieve the children that they see wearing their helmets. Funds raised from the South Carolina Sweet Potato Festival are targeted to support various causes in our local community. Some of these include the Lord Care, the Free Medical Clinic of Darlington, youth scholarships, safety patrol belts and badges for local schools, flags for schools, breast cancer awareness, Alzheimer's, autism awareness, the Heart Association, Christmas gifts for needy children, Kids Closet and Camp Burton Gym, a camp for children with medical challenges, and a sponsorship of Project Lifesaver, a program to locate persons with Alzheimer's, autism, and Down Syndrome who tend to wander.
With the rising cost of supplies and advertisement for the festival, we respectfully request a donation of $5,000 to support the festival. Why? According to the Morning News, we bring over 20,000 people to the city of Darlington during this one-day festival. We feel that the Pilot Club of Darlington promotes tourism and enhances the economy in Darlington by sponsoring this event. Many local businesses benefit from having visitors to our beautiful city of Darlington. We have vendors from South Carolina, North Carolina, Tennessee, Georgia, Kentucky, Virginia, and Florida who travel to participate in our festival. The Pilot Club of Darlington invest funds on advertising the Sweet Potato Festival to encourage the crowd of 20,000 or more to attend this event in downtown Darlington. We ask for your assistance in helping us to make this event one in which we can truly give back to our community. Thank you kindly for your consideration in this matter. Questions?
What's your comment?
Are we expected to, to, let's see, answer this prior to the grants committee? The citizens?
Yeah, I think the understanding is that this is gonna happen, the event's gonna take place before they meet, before we get them organized.
Okay. So does the bid?
I was gonna say, we understand that there's gonna be a new process going in the future. In the future, we will definitely follow the new process, but if we wait for that to start this time, then we miss the Sweet Potato Festival.
When is the festival?
October 8th, second Saturday of October.
October, yes. The grants committee is not to meet before October?
We're gonna, we're gonna...
I mean, that doesn't make sense. We have it in place.
We're going to appoint the, the name, or you're, you're gonna vote on the names tonight.
Right.
After that, I will constitute the group. They will get together, they will have to set their own meetings. This could go into August or early September. We just don't know if there'll be enough time to do it. After they make their recommendations, they will bring you their, their decisions, and then council will ultimately make the decisions on what's the fund.
I mean, I'm gonna say that.
We did not get $7,000 on the front.
We haven't done that either, no sir. We haven't gotten to that. This is kinda catching us in between the two, and I knew that they were coming, I didn't realize about the $7,500, excuse me, golf course, golf tournament.
We don't have to have an answer tonight. We just wanted to present to you, since we were caught, since y'all have a change of process, we wanted to be sure to get on the docket for y'all and to know that going forward, we will participate in, in the guidelines set forth by the new committee.
I hear about your problem with, with, with helmets, because that's your, or Darlington. It says if you have it and it does delay, unless you get the money in November, it's still, if it's approved.
A commitment is, is a commitment at that time. Absolutely.
I would say that's very important.
That's all I want, because there's so many requesting.
And we will follow the proper, we will follow the proper process as well, so.
And for us not to look like we're...
Even though yours had a girlfriend, but if they, they passed, this could be...
Correct.
...set if it was this year. This is your presentative committee.
Right. We would, depending on the commitment from the committee will also depend on, you know, for advertising, because we do put our sponsors on the advertisement, and that level is one that it would be advertised as sponsored by the city of Darlington as well, because we've changed our wording on our t-shirts even to say presented by the Pilot Club, because we have sponsorships, and the city of Darlington, county of Darlington, the people who sponsor us need to get that recognition as well.
Yeah, I was thinking about that. We should, committee should be able to get them.
One of the things we've got, the process in a quandary, is deciding what's gonna be the funding period, so that we have people who are coming with fall events this year who are not needing funding, and they'll be coming back next year, say we do it in January or February, and they'll be needing funding for the fall year. So we go have, this year it seems like we would have to have some overlap, where we fund some things prior to being able to, to set a dollar amount, and prior to being able to set out the process. It's like the Darlington Captain Club, you know, the Southern 500 thing.
And that's right away?
At the end of the month, this takes place first.
Well, they could, they could approve them now, and then you just have to work the committee again. The committee could be again in January of next year and go and start pre-approving people for the following year, 2023.
Correct. If the, if the government says that this is the deadline for 2023, is that, then we will apply that.
It, it still seems like we are doing, we are going an extra mile. When we said, because we've been talking about this committee now for quite a while, I just feel like we should wait and, and follow the process that we have put into motion.
Well, that's all we're saying.
And, and, and I'm saying, if they, if they, don't get out of it. Don't complicate the situation.
Yeah, we appreciate the, the time.
We always approve the council, the Sweet Potato Festival, for example.
We'll be happy.
So if the Sweet, if the committee approves the Sweet Potato Festival, and if they wait again till next year, then you'll always be behind eight months, whereas the, and they need to start doing it in January, February, or whatever's for the prior year, and do it every January, February after this year.
Correct. You never set the budget or whatever.
It's just because this year, since we're starting, there's just some overlap.
Thank you for your time and consideration.
So are they gonna get approved for two years?
No.
The committee, we'll take it for approval for two years. The committee, this committee meets in September. They would be glad to take it for approval for two years. Then the committee will be, again, I'm just saying, in January, they would approve people for the, everybody would come back again, and would be approved for the following year.
There's, we could have a lot of, a lot of places play a place in October, in August, September, October, because even the timing, to put the word out that you've got to apply by such and such a date, there won't be enough time between the notice to apply, the meeting, plus meeting to approve the request, and then funding the request for those entities that are needing our funding in August, September, and October, who'll have a chance to get funding this year if we don't vary a little bit from the new process for the balance of 2022 to take care of the 2022 second half request.
Could you still have that option?
I appreciate, I truly appreciate that they, they comment, but when we set something, let's just follow it. My thing is that, because we've been talking about this grant thing a long time, so I just say now, I mean, we might be delayed in putting it together, but we can speed the process up by saying the committee needs, because of the things that you're, that you're voicing here now, the committee needs that now that they know that they are going to, going to serve what it's all about, that we say that you need to meet by September, at least this is the top of August, in August you meet, and then go on, and then move on if it's no more than that.
But then, but then, 2023 year, they need to meet in January.
But I mean, this is not different. I don't, I don't want us to get to begin to look like we are favoring one organization to another. So, and I think if we follow what we set up and do like that.
There may be some people who do not get funded this year.
But they will. You know they will.
Well, if we meet within a time.
And that's the committee. If we say that you need to meet so that that won't happen, since that is a concern.
My recommendations in September. My goal, Mr. Millie, is when, when you vote on these names, I'll, this week I will contact them, and I will get them to meet just as soon as possible this month, and then they're gonna have to set their own rules, their guidelines, their officers, and everything else, and then I, they're gonna have to meet again, but we can get that done by September.
So they're gonna meet this month without any notice to the public to apply, to...
Well, they, I, I assume they're gonna meet to establish their, their rules, their protocols, their officers. They'll have an initial public meeting.
So they'll meet to establish their protocol in August.
And then they'll set the, the dates that they want to open it. We'll put information in the paper on our website and every other avenue that we can, and we'll give applicants time. I've got an application that's already created, and we'll send that out, and then in September, hopefully, I'm not gonna give you a definite time because I don't know yet, they can come back, and then we'll have that meeting, they'll make a recommendation to council, and you'll vote the way you vote. But before we get to that point, and we'll have to discuss this later, you're gonna have to determine how much money you wanna put up for that year, but that's, that's the easy question.
Is it necessary they can have more than one meet?
Yes.
Get done, get done.
They can.
There's no rule say they gotta meet once a month?
Again, there's a little bit, this first time, the two of y'all, for example, may be in the kids 22, because you may get the money out of the eight months. But then, my suggestion would be that they go ahead and meet, and they may have to meet three times, they may have to meet, and maybe November, once they get the word out for everybody, come in and get your money, get your applications, and they get the applications. And then they need to go ahead and do it again early the next year, so that they do it in January, February, or so next year, then everybody ahead of the time can go ahead and get your money, get your applications in early. And then we have an issue. That way we are, we're following protocol on this. All right, so what I would do, recommend tonight is the two entities that have come before you, I would advise, and we'll make sure that everyone knows, when the application will be accepted, I would, I would offer to them to make application at that point. Like I said, it may be after their event, but I think if they're awarded, they'll take the money. Okay. All right, very good. All right, any further discussion? All right, MASC conference wrap-up.
The theme for our recent Municipal Association Annual Meeting in Charleston was stability in government. We have experienced this, or lack thereof, at national level, at work here on the local level. This council has been several training sessions over the years on the proper manner of meetings to be conducted. We have a moderator, a moderator. Besides open meetings, we conduct the building in a orderly fashion. When I was first sworn in to council in January of 1998, I've been around here a while, y'all. Our meetings were conducted in a professional and orderly fashion. Seven members of council did not always agree, but we disagreed politely with respect and dignity. Today's council lacks that today. They're constant outbursts. One will talk over another, not allowing the first person to finish his first statement. The mayor has trouble controlling the meeting because of elevated voices and not allowing control. There has been some main calling, which is disrespect, and yes, some have been threatened. In this court, this council is playing a part in repairing the weary people we're trying to fix. Our meetings are viewed online by many people, organizations, and other government entities. Industries and retail businesses are looking for new locations, they will look elsewhere and not locate here because of the disruptive nature by this council. These companies not only look at our educational system, but they also look at the local government. The compatibility, the ability to work together, as well as the ability to work with them. Because of this lack of professionalism, these companies will look elsewhere. Another disturbing message I received is another government entity has produced a training film from our meetings on how not to conduct a council meeting. Another government entity has produced a training film from our meetings on how not to conduct a council meeting. This is something we should not be proud of. In closing, I ask all council members to act in a professional, civilized, and respectful manner, allowing our mayor to conduct orderly and productive meetings. Our citizens will then be proud of these meetings and our council meetings.
Thank you, Mr. Seagars. All right, grants committee performance? Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, as we discussed last month, the council by resolution established a new grants committee that will take city funds either through age tax or appropriated funds from the past and disperse them to eligible entities throughout the city. Each one of you has given me a person's name that you wish to be appointed. I'm gonna, I'm gonna name them now, and then I'm just gonna ask you to vote. Mr. Nettles appoints Lori Kavanaugh. Mr. Millie appoints Dean Sigmund. Mr. Seagars appoints Mike Sprott. Mr. Gardner appoints Dr. Andy Cohen. Ms. Reed appoints James Cooper III. Mayor Boyd appoints Regina Williams. And Ms. Backus appoints Gloria Heinrich.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve these individuals that have been nominated by each council member to constitute a grants committee for the city of Darlington.
I'll second.
Second. Ms. Backus?
Ms. Reed? Mr. Gardner? Ms. Seagars?
Very good. Ms. Security, thank you. I said, if you will, if you find, get off to them and see if they can expedite possible.
That'll be done tomorrow.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone in council for doing that. Thank the citizens for understanding that we're trying to regulate everything and get another viewpoint besides just ourselves, that the, the campaign committee will take it back to us and, and make a final approval of the 500, have the money spent. All right, um, D and R business, WWTP Operations Upgrade, Mr. Seagars?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm gonna be a little prematurely about this. We had hoped to tell you tonight that this, this project was completed. This was one that you all approved last December to be completed, the Waste Treatment Plant by North American Construction Company. Once every two years, we have to backwash our, or actually dump out our filters out there that use our carrier ore, which we use part of our effluent going through our Waste Treatment Plant, carry chlorine back to the head of the chlorine contact chamber. This is that waste we're going in black, black, I almost called it black. And they have to do that every two years, it costs about $7,000. We have identified an upgrade in moving the pumps that carry that ore from the beginning of the chlorine contact chamber to the end of the chlorine contact chamber, and that will allow us to wash each side of the chlorine contact chamber, use those pumps to clean out slugs and sizzles in there, and, and it should increase efficiency, a huge amount. We expect five years now of this filters and stuff too, and I wanted to come here and tell you that project was completed, but we had everything in place, but we found that we got some parts that were other parts of the knees, and we, we didn't get rid of them. It might be a little thirty days out, but, but that was really the only reason that we were gonna do this tonight.
This is just for informational purposes, we're not asking for any, and this was such of a, a large project, and a important project for the city, we just wanted to make it over. That's all.
So I have a question for the board.
that, that use our carrier ore, which we use part of our effluent going through our wastewater treatment plant, carrying chlorine back to the end of the chlorine contact chamber. This is that wastewater going in black, black, almost called a black river. And they have to do that every two years. It costs about $7,000 on this case. We have identified an upgrade in moving the pumps that carry that ore from the beginning of the chlorine contact chamber to the end of the chlorine contact chamber. And that will allow us to wash each side of the chlorine contact chamber, use those pumps to clean out the slugs that settles in there. And, and it should increase efficiency by a huge amount. We expect five years now of this filters itself too. And I wanted to come here and tell you that project was completed, but we had everything in place, but we found out we got some parts that we got other parts of the needs and we, we didn't get right. It might be a little thirty days out. But, but that was really the only reason that we were going to do this tonight.
This is just for informational purposes. We're not asking for any information. Now, this was such of a, a large project, and a core project for the city. We just want to make sure.
So I have a question for the water department. Last council meeting, I asked this question and I didn't get answered. So I'm asking again. We raised the water bill on citizens at the budget during our budget session. And my question then was, how much money did the water department profit from the 40% increase last year? So I'm asking that question again.
How much did water profit?
We don't, we don't, we just finished our fiscal year on June 30th. The auditors have not given us that information.
We tally our income every month. Income is special. You're saying you don't have any idea what you made money or lost money that year?
No, I'm saying that there are matters, including depreciation and general interest, that will need to be made by professional auditors that we're not going to do this year at all. That will, because we have to wait. That's part of our overall audit. And we just can't give that information yet because we don't know. We don't know what the auditors are going to require. That will come out. It'll be in our final audit.
When will they finish the audit?
It'll generally be done around October, November. But it's, it's premature to give you that yet.
Thank you, Mr. Sugar. First reading zoning request, 2002, Great Orange Street.
Mayor, yeah. The property owners at 203 Orange Street, which is the CRC property from Orange Street, Pearl Street, Long, Dartmouth Street, property is zoned in two different sections. Part of it is zoned general commercial and part of it is zoned R10, which is low density residential, which is the most stringent, most restrictive zoning district and the least restricted zoning district. The property owners have requested that the back section parcel that is currently R10 be reclassified as OR, office and residential, to allow them to cut part of property off to sell, fund the CRC. The proposed potential uses would be compatible with the CRC and its mission. We obviously can't discuss specifics because we don't have all of those details worked out without having the plat redrawn. And they can't redraw plat until we've reached that. The current designation is R10, and the front is general commercial as is most of Pearl Street, most of up front Pearl Street. As I said, these are two opposite ends of the zoning district spectrum, the most restrictive and the least restrictive, right next to each other. This is not typically what you do. You typically have something as a buffer zone between those two. The owners made the request to change the entire property to general commercial last year. The planning commission approved that request and then council denied it last year. The owners have waited the requisite 12 months to reapply and have made a request to change that portion to the office and residential instead of general commercial, which is much stricter in terms of use. So office and residential is kind of in the middle. General commercial is very, is not restrictive. Residential 10 is very restrictive. So the, this is brought to the planning commission. And after more than two hours of debate, the planning commission could not agree on recommendations. However, per Section 10-2 of the city zoning ordinance, the request shall be immediately approved if they fail to reach decision. And then it is presented to you. And staff is recommending that council approve this change request if it is a compromise solution between switching it from R10 to GC, which is very drastic, and a very reasonable request based on the discussion and debate from last year.
So if it's office residential, they can put like a tax office or something of that nature?
Which there are tax offices and, and that sort of thing. The AT&T building is down that road. Edwards &amp; Jones is on Orange Street.
Or would they not be allowed to put on the.
There's, you couldn't put a gas station. You couldn't put a Dollar General. Those types of things.
Is there a course of validity minimum that they could, or maximum that they have?
Yes, that, that's on all of our zoning districts. That, that's why they need to change the zoning district so that they can divide it and keep the CRC extending from Orange Street to Pearl Street. And the, the sale of the small piece of property will allow them to renovate the entire building.
So they have a buy of this small piece of property?
Uh, they have several interested parties. But with any economic development and legal issues, you can't really disclose those.
Well, I just remember the last time we talked about this, we asked over and over what they want to do, and it was repeatedly said, we don't know or we're not sure yet. Somebody was trying to figure out what they may.
It is, it is an office type use. It is appropriate for an office and residential.
So more of the office that can have a residential side, was what you're saying?
Yes.
I didn't know how much detail. They got this in their packet, actually.
Oh, they got this in their packet, okay. Well, so, Ms. Nettles, if you would review the information, their packet that we provided the planning committee, that kind of touches upon what you just mentioned about our inability to offer the details to the last goal.
So the actual society basically is still on details, not just part of it basically, the real details because you don't add it, is that what you're saying?
No, but at this time, we do.
At least we don't have any.
Please, I'll go again, I'm sorry. I'll refer back to Lisa.
I didn't see anything. That's why I'm.
This was in your planning, it should have been in your packet. And if it's not, I apologize. Just details it in more clear terms. But this was based on our discussion. The concerns that were brought by the neighborhood last year that caused council to deny the request seem to be that they were concerned about it being heavy traffic and a heavy retail type use. Office and residential kind of eliminates that problem of the increased traffic that you might see at a Dollar General or Walmart versus a docked house. And of course, there are other financial offices on, in that area. Andrews and Bryant CBA is in that area. You've got Edwards &amp; Jones.
Really in that area. That's directly.
Attention to rezone the whole frontage part of Orange Street.
Yes, sir. They are unable to carve off a piece of the property based on our zoning ordinance without rezoning. And obviously, they would want something, some use that's compatible because they still want the CRC to function as a immunity entity for children. So they actually liked the office and residential. And it seemed like a very reasonable request to create a buffer zone. Planning commission spent more than two hours in the discussion and couldn't come up with an answer.
And how many people were present for that meeting?
Four.
I, I just don't understand why there, why there is such a problem. Because if it remains that we do not act to help them in this situation and award them, it's going to stay in an area where you could, they can do anything they want because of the, because of how it's zoned right now. So it's just doesn't.
I think the request is very reasonable.
Yeah.
The way it's zoned, I had it going to the council, correct?
Pretty much.
Yeah. I mean, this is.
So what's the difference later between office residential and mixed commercial?
Mixed commercial is not a zoning district in our form.
I think when we used that term, we were using it to describe office slash residential. So, yeah, so that's just, that's just driving, yeah. But office residential is the goal.
Please, this is just a definition in our country's office residential, that you would be held. You want to hear that? I, I feel it's a very reasonable request and, and a good compromise from going general commercial. And it does create a buffer area that is currently not existing. And I don't know why they wouldn't have put it there to start with, but it's passed. And when they drew it, that's what they drew. Here is what the zoning ordinance says specifically about office and residential district. The OR district is intended to accommodate office, institutional, and residential uses in areas whose character is mixed or in transition. It is designed principally for use along major streets and subdivision borders characterized by older houses to help ameliorate the consequences of change impacting these areas and provide a transitional buffer between potentially incompatible commercial and residential development, which is exactly what we need right there.
I mean.
They will see what the problem is.
I don't know.
Based on all the.
This would be first reading, yes, sir.
Request. It's simple. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the first reading zoning request for 203 Orange Street.
I'll say that.
Mr. Nettles?
DeBae, hang on a second, please.
Mr. Milling? Well, Mr. Mayor, I hate it, but just as I had involvement and didn't vote last year in the matter, I'll go recuse myself. I've represented the family. They are great people. Met with them in an office on several occasions about CRC and the work that their mom had done.
Mr. Gardner?
If the property was on Pearl Street, I'd see no issue with it. It's surrounded by houses where it sits on the back. So I'm going to vote in favor of it this time, but with understanding in the future. I just don't know how we're going to go about zoning our city in the future without understanding what is actually going to be placed in the property thus while we're rezoning historical neighborhoods. This was Oak Street. We were very clear that we wanted to preserve our historical neighborhoods. And it's on Pearl Street, it's maybe not so clear. And I'm not sure why that is. But I'll put it in favor of the first reading, but want a lot more further discussion and more education over the next month.
I think a two-story building is going on Oak Street, right?
Commercial.
A commercial building on Oak Street. A two-story commercial building. How does it deserve a two-story district?
If you remember correctly, we voted that down previously, fought pretty hard against it. I think there were some legal loopholes that was done differently. Am I wrong?
The way the building is on it, on Orange Street.
But I'm not wrong.
It's Orange.
Mr. Gardner, you vote yes?
I do.
Mr. Seager?
If the commission could come up with a solution, I can.
I'll vote yes again for tonight, so further discussion. So that's one, two, three. Mr. Nettles?
As it's first reading, I'll vote yes for first discussion.
And if anybody is opposed to it, bring us further discussion so we can look into it.
I'll be happy to meet with anyone and discuss any details.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
And F has been, with Estee Darlington, our political survey final report will be taken to the buildings. There will be no second session for tonight. Reminder that Tuesday, September the 6th, 2022, for every monthly meeting, we're going to city council. It will be at 6 o'clock again. Will I have a motion to adjourn?